All right, good evening, folks. Time being six oh two. I will call the meeting of the Free Town Planning Board to order. Let the minutes reflect that in fact, there is a quorum present via Zoom. Before we get started, folks, I need to read this, the governor's order. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March twelfth, twenty twenty order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law, Chapter thirty A, paragraph eight, section eighteen, and the governor's March fifteenth, twenty twenty order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Free Town Planning Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the Town of Free Town's website, freetownma.gov. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we aren't able to do so, despite best efforts, we will post on Free Town website an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. Now that I got that out. We have quite a few things, Chris, that are requesting to be continued. Is that correct?
Yes.
So why don't we, why don't we do that first? And get those things out of the way. That way, in case anybody has called in or is waiting or listening for them, they, they don't need to sit there and, and wait. So I believe we'll, we'll start with item number two. I believe they're asking for a continuance. Is that correct, Chris?
Yes, to December fifteenth.
The Medesha Way to, you said December fifteenth? Okay, I will call that public hearing back to order and entertain a motion to continue that public hearing to December fifteenth, six o'clock via Zoom. Again, folks, just a reminder, I have to do roll call votes for all these votes. I know it's tedious, but it's, it's a necessary evil, so I'll, I'll entertain that motion.
I'll make a motion that we, um, I just drew a blank.
We're going to continue all, Chris, are we continuing all these to December fifteenth?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to continue. Go ahead.
Um, so before I do that, what I've been doing with conservation is I've just been calling all the public hearings to order. Um, and then asking if there's anybody that wanted to make a, a statement on it. Uh, and then just asking for a, a motion on them all. So why don't I do that rather than wasting the time of going into individual? So, so it's items two, uh, four, five, six. So what those items are, number two is for Medesha Way. It's a subdivision plan, residential subdivision plan. Number four is for a commercial development, uh, building at zero Brayley Road. That would be the Mitch Kev. Number five is Quarry Drive. That is for a solar energy system. Um, number six is one twenty-five South Main Street, but that's for the planned mixed-use development. Um, excuse me, they've all requested, uh, excuse me, a continuation to the fifty. So I called all those public hearings to order. I'll entertain a motion that we continue all the aforementioned public hearings to December fifteenth, six o'clock via Zoom.
So moved.
I need a second.
Second.
Thank you. Motion's made and supported. If there's no further discussion on the motion, um, I will, um, I will do a roll call vote. So Bob Jones.
Aye.
Bob Jones, aye. Uh, Chris Mello.
Aye.
Uh, Kevin Damaris states, aye. Uh, is Debbie, Debbie Robbins is here, correct?
Yeah, I'm going to abstain, Kevin.
Okay, abstain. Thank you, Debbie. And, uh, so that's all we, that is all we need to, uh, to, to carry the motion. So, uh, let the minutes reflect, uh, that the, uh, member, Deborah Robbins abstained from this due to her involvement with one of the aforementioned projects. So, right, I think that's, I think that's that for the continuations for tonight. So why don't we head back to the top of our agenda? We have a Form A application for Huron Ave prepared by Outback Engineering. Folks that are listening, uh, both planning board members and the general public, applicants, engineers, if you go to the town's website, all of the applications, uh, their doc, your supporting documents, our peer review letters, they are all posted on our website. So if you go to freetownma.gov, if you click on Boards and Committees, click on the Planning Board, um, there should be, um, it'll say on the right-hand side, December first, twenty twenty, meeting materials. Click on that, and then all the PDFs pop up. So, uh, we have, that would be, uh, the Huron Ave is, is listed on that and is the last one there. If, uh, folks would like to look at it that way. So, um, again, a polite reminder, not, not all of these are public hearings, so they're not open for the public. If they have a question, just politely wait for a break and, uh, try to get my attention. Just state your name. It's important since we don't have face-to-face here that everybody before they talk states their name so that we know who, uh, we're dealing with and, and, um, how to address them. So if there's no other questions procedurally, uh, I'm going to begin. So let's start with, uh, if the representative on the Form A for Huron Ave is here.
I think that's me. I'm Matt Vivins. I'm the person who applied for this.
Okay, and, um, are you the engineer?
No, I'm the property owner. Um, the engineering company was Outback Engineering.
Yeah, I was going to say, I'm looking at the plans and there wasn't, there's nobody here from Outback. Okay.
It doesn't look like they got the message. Um, I asked them a couple of times to be here.
Oh, would you prefer to, that we wait on this until, um, or if you want to go ahead and proceed with, uh, uh, some sort of presentation?
I could tell you about it, but I don't want to waste your time if you need engineering input. I wouldn't be very good at that.
The, and I appreciate your honesty. You're giving us credit. You're assuming that we are too, right? So, no, I, I, I think, you know, in just, in looking at the, the plan, if, if folks are looking at it, that's the parcel A. That's, that's the purpose of this plan is to create what's, what's noted as parcel A. Um, and unfortunately, I, I don't know and I don't believe that we are eligible to sign this because you don't have the required minimum frontage of a hundred and seventy-five feet. And, um, I know that we, and that's why I thought it might be important to have your engineer here because I know that our office and the engineer had a back and forth relative to his, his, he was, um, making statements that this can be done in other towns. We reached out to other towns. Half of them said, no way. Half of them said, yeah, we do things like that. The Form A handbook, which is kind of a guidance we get from the state, uh, does not allow for that, if you will. It, it, it says the minimum requirement of your minimum frontage. So I'm, I'm not a hundred percent that we're even going to be eligible to sign this. Uh, I'll, I'll open it up to any other board member if they have input. Um, but if, if you feel more comfortable having your engineer or better representation for your side, uh, maybe they have something that they could shed some additional light. I don't know.
Sure, I'd be, I, I can talk with Outback Engineering if you'd be willing or able to, um, um, you know, continue at another time. I could do that. The, um, just very briefly about it, it's not, you know, it's not my area of expertise, but my understanding was that this is a little bit different than some of the other projects because we're not looking to build a house or anything here. It's just the property across the street from my house that belongs to my neighbor, and she's willing to sell it to me so we can, one, clean it up because it's kind of a mess. And if all we ever do there is plant a garden, that's fine by me. If we can do the maximal thing I would do on there someday, maybe would be a septic field because right now I have a tight tank and, um, possibly like a carport. But that's all we're talking about doing, so it's not really like, there's no commercial development or anything.
No, and not, and not, I'm not trying to cut you off. All, all that stuff is not things for our consideration. What you, what you presented us with is something that actually doesn't require an approval, just an endorsement. That's the A and R. It's an approval not required. So all it really requires is our endorsement and then you, but there is a, a minimum requirement that you have the frontage. Uh, I've been doing this a while and many of these other board members have. Uh, and, and I, I think I was able to earlier cite some of the resources that we reached out to, um, which is why we gave your engineer an opportunity to come in. And I always use this, uh, you know, give us something to hang your hat on, but, or, or hat on. But i- in this instance, um, I'm just not convinced that we have anything that can prove to us unequivocally that we need to derivate from the standard by which this town has been operating under for the last, as far as I'm concerned, twenty-five years, as far as I know.
I see.
So it would be, it would be a major derivation from what we actually do here. Uh, and, and on the normal, if you had a hundred and seventy-five feet of frontage, it would have been signed already. So, um, but I, I think we try, uh, uh, at least I wanted to give the opportunity to the engineer. So I, I'll, uh, I'll, uh, I have no issue with, uh, taking this up at our next meeting and allowing your engineer to come in and, and maybe present a, a better case for your side.
I appreciate it. I'll track him down. Uh, I, I hope that he would be here, but I'm, I'll track him down and see if we can get him to come. Um, hopefully he can convince you.
Okay, sir. Thank you very much. I apologize. It wasn't the news you wanted to hear, but, um.
No, no, I appreciate your time.
Sure, sure, sure. All right. Have a good night. Thank you.
All right, you too. I'm going to hang up now. Thank you. Have a good meeting.
You too. Thanks. Um, so, uh, yeah, if everybody was looking at that plan, unfortunately, they just don't have a hundred and seventy-five feet of frontage and I'm not aware of. And it's, it's annexing part of, it's not even, it's annexing part of another parcel and I'm, I, I don't even know about that. But, um, okay, next, uh, what we have is, uh, number three. This is a continuation of a public hearing. I will call back to order. This is an application, uh, from a TJA Clean Energy LLC. It's a site plan review application for Free Town Solar, uh, two. And, uh, this is, uh, for people's edification. This is, uh, located, um, I believe it would be to the north of the existing solar array at, at Marie's Way. Um, if I've got my directions correct. So that being said, this is a public hearing, so the applicant will be afforded an opportunity to make some presentation. Uh, we do have, uh, our review engineers here, I believe. Is Adam or Scott here?
Yeah, it's, uh, Adam Cram with Environmental Partners.
Thanks, Adam. Um, I don't have the benefit of having a computer. I'm talking into a phone. So if, if I'm asking you, it's only because I don't have a computer to see who's on. Um, so, uh, I will call this public hearing back to order. Uh, if anybody has any questions, again, we'll wait, uh, till there's a, a break after the applicant makes some, their presentation, uh, and then we'll allow for that. If the public has a question, just again politely state your name for the record and, uh, we will allow the question, uh, to be asked at that time. Um, we are, of course, recording this meeting, just as a polite reminder to everybody involved. So that being said, Azu, are you present?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, good evening now, uh, and members of the board and public, good evening. Uh, this is Azu Etunir, uh, representing a TJA Solar, uh, with my, uh, from my firm, ET Engineering Enterprises, Inc., of, uh, four eighty-one Bedford Street in Bridgewater. Uh, this project has been continued, as you know, because of the COVID and then a few items that we, excuse me, that we have had to, um, address through the, your engineer's review. Uh, some of the comments, uh, sort of related with the items pertaining to drainage that also overlap with the Conservation Commission's, uh, review and jurisdiction. Uh, so we have looked at the, um, comments and some of them are innocuous in nature and some of them are detailed and some of them we, uh, do not necessarily agree with and, uh, would, would like to not, uh, uh, push this, uh, hearing process. And there were somewhat, I would not like to, uh, engage in a, uh, some sort of a cantankerous discourse, but I would like to, uh, have, um, uh, a response to, um, a comment that we carried over from Conservation last night. And we did receive an email about the availability of, uh, your engineering, uh, engineering review consultants, uh, uh, Environmental Partners, uh, of, uh, I believe Quincy or Brentree, and, uh, were being represented by, uh, Mr. Crams. Uh, so what I would like to do is respond to the email. Uh, I, I believe there was a suggestion, yeah, uh, last night at Conservation, uh, which, um, Adam, uh, followed up with an email today. So we'd like to set up that, uh, conversation to go through their comments and then, uh, somehow, uh, reach, try to reach a resolution and bring this project to a conclusion. Uh, and if we cannot reach a resolution, then we need to come back to the board and, uh, uh, discuss why we could not have a meeting of the minds. Uh, in terms of our engineering preferences, I do think that a certain, uh, prerogative needs to be given to the person responsible for the design unless the assumptions or the design considerations are outrageous. Uh, but if they are within the tolerable, uh, tolerance allowed for design, then, um, deference ought to be given to, uh, the person that at the end of the day is owning the plan, uh, who's signing and stamping and certifying the plans. Uh, there should be against certain deference given to that because at the end of the day, that is a person that will be liable for any errors and omissions. Uh, so having said that, uh, there are a few items, however, that I would like to, uh, have the board weigh in on uh, because, uh, Environmental Partners really can't take the liberty of saying, no, you don't need to do that. And some of that, uh, is, for example, items relating to scale of drawing. Uh, sometimes when you get into the size of a drawing, uh, it will be very cumbersome to be able to, uh, uh, annotate and, uh, annotate a drawing on such a scale where you end up with, uh, multiple sheets. So something like that, uh, and, um, if you have the review report, the latest review report that, um, Environmental Partners submitted dated November ninth, twenty twenty.
Just, Azu, Azu, please, hold, hold on a second. Chris, do we have a copy of that? Because I'm not, I'm not finding it on our, on our side. It's on the, it's on the conservation.
Oh, okay.
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 So, so let me just, hold on, hold on, Azu, hold on. Uh, for members of the planning board and the public who would like to view this document, uh, again, it's on our website. If you go under Boards and Committees, click on the Conservation Commission. Uh, on the left-hand side, it'll say, uh, meeting materials for, uh, current conservation filings. Um, and, uh, Conservation Commission current filings. And again, the PDFs all pop up there and we are looking at the peer review letter number three. It's, uh, there as a downloadable PDF. So, uh, I didn't mean to cut you off, Azu. And again, to what Azu was talking about, last night, the, the Conservation Commission held a meeting and there are a few things that, to, to Azu's point, and we've had this with, with, with other engineers, this is not novel or unique to this project, uh, where you just have professional differences. And oftentimes I like to facilitate a meeting of the minds and have a bit of a planning board presence there to facilitate some of these, uh, what I would call niggly little items uh, and, and kind of present, uh, uh, an opinion of the planning board relative to how we have in the past voted on things and, and what we would be relatively comfortable with. Again, all that has to be signed off by the full board. But in years past and, and projects past, we found that it's, it, this helps facilitate this process. So, um, I was holding off on responding to that email, Azu, relative to a meeting. One o'clock works fine for me, um, this week. Uh, I think Thursday would be best for me. Um, so if, if, uh, that's amenable to the other parties, then, uh, we'll, we'll schedule it for, for Thursday at one uh, to take care of, uh, some of these other issues, so.
Yes. Yes, one o'clock, uh, Thursday would be, uh, amenable to us. That would be perfect.
All right. Is Adam, does that work for you?
Yes, sir.
Excellent. Thank you. Um, so hopefully everybody's had an opportunity to pull up the document that, uh, that Azu's talking about. So, uh, if you could, Azu, uh, like last night, just give us the page number also, not just the number.
That's correct. So on this, uh, review, uh, report number three dated November ninth, I am on page number six of seventeen. And, uh, it will be, uh, item number three. Uh, it's regarding, uh, the, uh, scale of the, and, um, I believe Environmental Partners, uh, have noted that they are able to interpret the plans and do not need plans at a different scale. However, because they cannot, they don't have that authority to waive that requirement, uh, they are deferring appropriately to the board to make that, uh, uh, decision. And so we are praying the board to allow the scale of the drawings that we have.
So you're looking, again, not to cut you off, but you're looking for a waiver requirement on, on the one, on, on, on when our scales are simply because of the, the size. And again, I'm, I'm not going to read everything on, on the EP report or their response, but, uh, it says they are, they're, they're able to interpret the plans and don't need plans at a different scale and they just, they have to defer to us. So if it's, um, if you're requesting this specific waiver, then, um, at this point in time, I'd entertain a motion that, uh, the waiver be granted. Or, or do you, or do you want us to, how, how many of these things do you want to talk about tonight, Azu? Or how many of these things?
It's, it's really like three or four items that are really specifically required, required in action. Yeah, so it's not, everything else we can discuss on Thursday, um, as you have, uh, uh.
Would you rather we voted on the individual waiver request or you just wanted to listen to all three or four and then vote that way?
I probably would make sense to, uh, combine them and, uh, act them, uh, just, uh.
All right. I like, I like to do things so we don't, so we don't spend too much time on a specific waiver request is why I say it. Typically, just tell us what the waiver request is and then I'll ask by consensus if the board has any issues. If somebody has an issue or a question, at that time, it can get raised. And then at the end, then I will ask for an official vote on granting all the waivers, so we can go through them that way. So the first one is just basically a waiver relative to scale. EP takes no exception to that. So, um, unless anybody on the board by consensus just speak up if you have an issue with that waiver.
No objection.
Excellent. All right. So what's the next one, Azu?
The next one is on, uh, page seven and item number, uh, item number, um, uh, number eight.
Okay.
Item number eight, it says, um, oh, sorry. Uh, both number seven and number eight, uh, deal with the address of the, um, contractor and installer. Uh, as you know, a lot of, a lot of times, not just with their solar projects, but also even residential sub, uh, uh, projects. Somebody brings it into developing, uh, permitting phase and then while they're doing that, they're bringing partners that will, because some of these projects tend to be expensive. So what we have listed here on the drawings is the name of the recorder owner as well as the person filing the application. Obviously, by the time we get to a building permit process, uh, all that information will be relevant and will be, uh, documented. So I think, uh, to move the project forward, uh, we have listed the relevant, what we believe are the relevant information, the name of the engineer, the name of the surveyor, the name of the applicant, as well as the name of the, uh, property owner. And so we are asking that the board allow this to move forward in, uh, with that understanding. And then the other item relates to the name, uh, item number eight relates to the address, contact information and signature for the project proponent. Uh, I, I cannot authenticate, I cannot, I'm not able to authenticate, uh, what digital signature of my client, uh, the applicant. So we submitted to the board's office physical copy of the drawings with the applicant's information and signature. And, uh, so I would, uh, yeah, uh, so I don't have that electronic. I can only authenticate my digital signature on my drawings because I'm responsible for that.
Okay, so we can, we can confirm, Chris, we have that?
Uh, yes, we do.
Okay, so item number eight would appear to be at least, uh, better addressed. Um, and I, and item number seven, and, and I will say item number eight, uh, in case there is anything outstanding. Prior, so you would have no problem, the applicant would have no problem with, i- if this was, uh, a, a condition rather than a wholesale waiver, if there was a condition placed on those that prior to issuance of a building permit, uh, the information needs to be provided to the planning board and say a, uh, a new, uh, cover sheet, if, uh, if required, would be, uh, presented then also. You wouldn't have an issue with that?
No, sir. No, sir.
Okay, consensus by the board members? Did anybody take umbrage with, uh, those two waiver requests? No? Okay. Excellent. Uh, so what's the next one?
On this, on this, on the same page, item number ten.
Yep.
The applicant shall submit proof of liability insurance in accordance with section eleven point two eight point M point three. That, uh, insurance companies generally will not issue you an insurance for a project that is not, uh, approved or under construction. And if you look at the Department of Public Utilities regulations now, when you go to a building permit, you are required to provide all that insurance and the building department will not issue a building permit under DPU, uh, guidelines and requirements. So we will provide that information at that time because quite frankly.
Prior, prior to issuance of the building permit, I, I think, I think, I think we've been doing this long enough, Azu. We've been granting these waiver requests. Typical. This is typical stuff, right? Because we understand sometimes our regulations are very vigorous and they try to get as much as, as they can, um, upfront. So, uh, typically we would condition it. Part of what we like to see on our end is not only that information going to the building department, we like to see it back in the file in the planning board. So it's more of a one-stop shopping, if you will, to make sure all the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed. So, uh, typically that's why we would condition that, that it not only be provided to the building department, it has to come to the planning board. The planning board, once they receive it, they look at that and say, okay, it's met the condition. Now the, now the building permit can be issued. So, um, I, I appreciate the fact that all that has to be provided when you're getting a building permit, but more importantly, it needs to be provided prior to us to ensure that we've got the information where it needs to be.
Okay, so we will, we will be absolutely amenable to and not adverse to, uh, such a condition. And so that we can, uh, when we file for the building permit, a, a condition mandating or stipulating that we do a concurrent submission of that information.
Correct.
When we do go, go for the building permit, uh, we will not be adverse to that and we are amenable to it, so.
Okay, does anybody on the board take, uh, uh, issue with that, uh, that again, that condition request?
No issue.
No issues, okay. Well, that was your floor, Azu. Do you have any more that we can quickly get done?
Two, two, two more, two more. I think I'm, I.
Two more. I like your, I like your math, Azu.
I was, uh, I was being dyslexic.
Yeah, okay. All right, what page are we on now, buddy?
Okay, uh, page number eight.
Okay.
Uh, and that is regarding, uh, the applicant shall provide a, a sign consistent with the Town of Free Town sign by law. We, uh, we will, uh, provide that once we, uh, have, uh, an actual developer. Once we get to that phase, uh, the, the, we have added a note, uh, to, uh, to address that issue on the plan. Um, the name and the contact person, we don't have. I can give you a fictitious name. I can even give you my name, but that would be incorrect.
No, no, here's the, here's the thing too, Azu. Again, uh, some of our bylaws, they're a little bit, I don't want to say inconsistent, but, um, if you, you, there are certain, uh, buy right, uh, signs. So if it's a buy right sign, then it doesn't require any further review from us. If in fact, there is a. If in fact, there is a sign that requires a special permit, you will be doing that at your own peril or, you know, and you will have to go get a special permit at that time. It will be denied when you go to the building per, uh, office at that time. So typically how we condition it is if the sign meets the current bylaw, then we're, we're good with that so long as we know the, the sign location and why we want to know the sign location. So it's far enough off the street, it's not going to, uh, cause any kind of problems with, with sight lines. But if it meets the height and the width requirements and the lighting requirements of our bylaw, then it's a buy right. Uh, just a building permit required. So.
And that's, and that's really, that's what we are gonna, that's what we are really proposing. We have identified the location for that and we are just, and we just, we want to hold off on all the rest of that information until we have an actual developer that will, uh, do the construction and installation. And that, and we'll, I mean, the amount of money they spend on these projects, I don't think they will ever be cutting any corners. And the one that, that's already existing next door is a proof of that.
Right.
And then there were, I believe, uh, that, uh, addresses, um, all the items that, um,
Okay.
that I wanted to, uh, uh, resolve with the board.
Okay. So I think you've heard by consensus, um, the board's opinions on all those things. If you, if you want us to do, uh, uh, an exact motion, I have, um, I have no problem doing that tonight. Or it may be that you want to wait, uh, after the fruits of our labor on Thursday to see if there are any other waivers or things that you might want to request then too.
Well, the last, the last one that already has been, uh, we have identified before, uh, is the last one is on page thirteen of seventeen. That's the last.
Seventeen, okay.
Yes, sir. And I think that's how we handled, uh, uh, Freetown Solar One. And that is, uh, basically, uh, item number, on page number thirteen. And regards of, uh, uh, the type of financial charity in, it's undetermined at this time. And basically, uh, we have a ask for approval condition that requires the applicant to provide a financial charity to the town before building permit and concurrently submit that to the planning board. That's the last item.
Okay. So, uh, again, that's a typical one, uh, not knowing that some of the players. So, um, does anybody on the board have a problem with that, uh, last, um, waiver request? Or, or reduction? No issues. Okay. So, uh, what I'm gonna, Azu, what I'm gonna have Chris do is, um, over the next couple of days, write up the waiver that you, uh, the outright waiver you requested. And then the, um, the others where you were looking for conditional waivers, have him type that up, send that out to you and board members so that we can check them for veracity and then we can vote on them. Uh, again, if there's anything that needed to be added at this next Thursday, or this Thursday's meeting, we can, we can add it at that time. Is that, um, is that what, um, are you amenable to that?
Very much so. Uh,
Okay.
Couldn't, I couldn't ask, ask for anything better.
All right. Um, so Adam, I look forward to getting with you. We'll do, obviously it's going to have to be a call. We're not gonna, I don't believe we're gonna do an in-person, but I'll reach out tomorrow. I'm finally able to get back to work tomorrow. So I'll reach out to you, Adam, uh, on this and Azu to see if we're gonna, um, if we can, if we're gonna end up doing in-person or, or it's, it's just gonna be on the phone. So, uh, we can make that decision, I guess, tomorrow, whatever.
Okay.
Um, do you have anything else, Azu, that you need?
Uh, no, as my beautiful, beautiful wife always tells me, uh, stop listening to yourself and be quiet. So I think I'm done right at this moment.
Oh, I, I thought she was gonna tell you to quit while you're ahead because that's what my wife tells me. All right. Um, are, are there any comments, questions from folks, uh, either on the board or in the, uh, the Zoom audience?
Uh, the only question I, yeah, I'm sorry, Kevin. The only question I had was when he wants to continue to.
Yeah, this is Bob, this is Bob Joes that's asking the question. So.
Thanks, Bob. Uh, I, uh, uh, I am assuming that, um, we will be able to, uh, reach a resolution and be able to, uh, wrap it up, wrap up, uh, whatever is outstanding in terms of tech, those technical items, uh, after our Thursday meeting. So I would, uh, request that we continue to the very next meeting, I believe, the December fifteenth hearing. And then if we are not able to reach a resolution by then, I will send in a letter so that I wouldn't be wasting the board's time. I will send in a letter requesting a continuation. But I'm hoping, I'm very hopeful, uh, that we can resolve all this by the fifteenth.
Okay. Thank you. Okay.
All right. If there's nothing else, then, uh, I will entertain a motion to continue the public hearing for TJA Solar to, um, December fifteenth, six o'clock via Zoom.
So moved.
I need a second. Motion. Thank you. Motion's been made and supported. If there's no further discussion on the motion, uh, I will do a real call vote. Bob Joes.
Aye.
Uh, Chris Mello.
Aye.
Um, Deb Robbins.
Aye.
Kevin Demaris. Aye. So the motion carries. We'll, uh, we'll reach out to you tomorrow, Azu, uh, on that.
Thank you.
And, uh, look forward to, to getting some of these things taken care of on Thursday. So.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
You're welcome, sir.
You all have a good night.
You too now. Um, all right, Chris, where does that leave us? Mitch Kev, that's continue, continue, continue. Uh, number seven, concurrent public hearings. Is that where we're next? That's the DEPTON Innovation Way? Yeah. So, uh, I will call back to order, uh, the concurrent public hearings that are being held for an applicant, uh, uh, Innovation Way. Um, it's for a special permit for a sign. Additionally, there is a special permit required for, uh, the, uh, gas station and the size of the building. It requires a site plan review too. So, um, if I'm not mistaken, am I reading that correct? Yep, there it is. So, um, that being said, again, this is a, uh, public hearing. So the applicant will make some sort of presentation. We may reach out and ask questions ourselves or of our engineering consultant. After that, we will open it up to people in the audience. Uh, again, just politely identify yourself and I will call on you.
Great. Thank you, Ms.
Sure.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman. Attorney Tom Killorn, I represent the applicant. Uh, with me tonight is Nick Giacobi, one of the principals of the, uh, applicant LLC, as well as Brandon Carr from Depreet Engineering, uh, who did the, uh, site design. Uh, as the board may recall, we were before you on October sixth, twenty twenty. I think we had a fairly in-depth and, and lengthy hearing on that evening, uh, where we gave you an, an overview of the project. Um, we had also at that time had a, um, comment letter or re-review letter from EPG um, that Brandon had had an opportunity to respond to. And we went through a lot of those comments. On, just to refresh the board's recollection, I, I know, Mr. Chairman, you mentioned it. So we're before the board tonight for a site plan review as well as four special permits. One for the gas station use, one for the hours of operation, uh, for a restaurant, um, between, um, seven PM and seven AM. Uh, one for a special permit for the sign illumination, uh, so that we can use it, uh, during the nighttime or have the place illuminated, those signs illuminated during the nighttime hours. And then a, uh, special permit for the, uh, signs that were submitted. I, I think one of the major sticking points or one of the, uh, issues, um, that really was unresolved had to do with the drainage and specifically with regard to, um, the catch basins and whether they're sitting offline or online. Um, since the board's meeting, I think we had another, uh, I didn't attend it, but I know Brandon did. I believe Mr. Giacobi did. Um, Mr. Demaris, I think you were there as well as representative from EPG, um, to discuss, uh, how to address that issue. Um, there have been some revised plans submitted and I think some further back and forth between, uh, Brandon Carr and EPG. Brandon is, is like I mentioned on the call. So maybe he can explain, um, what went on at that meeting and, and what's being proposed. Um, yep. Good evening.
Thanks. Brandon, just before you get started, I, I'd just like to make a comment again, uh, for members of the public and or, or members of the planning board. This is, uh, one of those meetings where we try to facilitate. I don't want anybody thinking that there was some sort of planning board meeting that wasn't posted anywhere. Um, to facilitate, uh, the conversation to strike, we can't, uh, come together. And I just want to give credit where credit is due on both parts, Environmental Partners Group and, uh, the pre-engineering. Um, I'm reviewing the latest, um, here review letter from EPG. You can find that on our, again, on the website. Um, and, uh, there are a number of issues that have been closed out, uh, through cooperation between both entities. So I just wanted to give credit where credit is due. I appreciate that. Um, and again, if you want to, uh, just hit on the outstanding items and, you know, maybe we could just go from there.
Um, good evening, Brandon Carr with Depreet Engineering. Uh, like Tom said, we've, um, gone back and forth on a couple of reviews, um, with Environmental Partners Group, met, had a couple of calls. I think, um, the latest review letter, um, there were a couple outstanding items. I think the trap, and Adam can correct me if I'm wrong, but, um, I believe we addressed all the comments related to traffic. Our traffic engineers are here tonight. If, um, there are any questions.
There was, uh, this is Adam, Crown with Environmental Partners. There was one question on the site triangles on the northern entrance, I believe.
Okay. Uh, Herman, are you?
Yeah. Yes, I'm, I'm here. Hey, Brandon.
If, if we could, um, if we could just be specific about what page and what item we're talking about so that, uh, the other members will be able to, uh, more readily view it.
All right. I can generally discuss this. So there's actually a separate letter that, a traffic review letter.
Right.
Um, that we prepared and it would be comment number four on it.
Okay.
Um, and this references their October twenty twenty traffic impact study. Um, if you'd like, I could try to share my screen and, and show what's going on.
Um, why, why don't we get an over, o- overview here if it's, again, um, if, I don't, I don't want to dive too much into the weeds on this stuff. What, what, what is, what is the issue that, uh, is, is it's not meeting some sort of standard, correct?
So the figure that is shown, doesn't show the land, like potential landscaping and other potential, um, visual obstructions for cars making a right turn out of the northern side entrance closest to Route twenty four. So the concern is that vehicles coming off of twenty four, um, coming through may not see the, the cars turning. And likewise, the, the cars turning may not see the, the cars coming. Um, that's, that's the crux of the issue.
So what, what?
Okay.
So this is Herman from, from Beta Group.
Yeah.
So again, we've, we've provided, um, in the dependencies, um, the site triangle, um, figure. However, um, EPG has requested that the landscaping and, and our signing be shown on the site plan. Now, this could be coordinated, I don't know if Brandon, have you guys provided a site plan that shows the landscaping within that site triangle that we've provided?
Yeah, I'm looking, I'm catching up for it now. And I'm looking at the, the figure from Beta's report versus our plans. I can, um, if it's, if it's okay with the board, assuming that we close the hearing tonight, we could, um, just maybe put a condition on it that we can revise any landscaping that falls within that view triangle, if there is any. I can get a separate plan over to Adam for him to, to do a final check on. But it looks like we might have to just relocate like one or two trees, but we could easily, um, we could easily accommodate any changes.
All right. So we don't spend too much time on that. You have no issue if it was just a condition that you show, uh, uh, a, a, a new, um, site triangle that, that meets the requirement, moving a couple of trees?
Yeah, we'll, we'll throw the site triangle on our landscaping plan and just make sure that any vegetation that we're proposing falls outside that.
All right. And that would, and, and Adam, that would address the, the issue, correct?
Yes, I believe so. I think we also suggested, um, a note about maintaining the landscaping so that it doesn't get too high to block anything in the future.
Okay. So if we can just include that note, uh, on whatever kind of operation and maintenance plan that we have for it or some sort of note.
I'm sure. That's not a, that's not a problem, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I, I didn't think, you know, you know, just pick some shrubs that are lower growing, I guess, right? That, that might help too. Um, okay. Uh, what's the next, uh, uh, issue? I know, Adam, you brought up this, the, 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 the traffic. So. You want, Brandon, you want to, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I can, um, I think that the other main issue, and there's a number of, um, ones that relate to uh, waivers or special permits, which I believe, um, Tom has a full list of the waivers. But the big, you know, the sticking point that we've been discussing at past meetings relates to the drainage design. Um, and I can just do a quick overview of, um, of, you know, where we were, the comment we received and where we're at now. So if, um,
Sure.
Basically, um, the town has a requirement that all catch basins be configured in an offline configuration. So that basically means that each catch basin, the pipe out of that catch basin flows to enough, to a drainage manhole, not to another catch basin. Um, we had not, um, arranged our catch basins in that area and, and we had requested a waiver from that town standard. Um, we had shown that we meet the TSS removal, which is kind of the main, um, kind of result of, you know, that basically in the Mass Stormwater Handbook, it says you have to, in order to claim certain removal efficiencies, you have to, um, arrange a catch basins in offline configuration. And since we weren't taking those, that credit, basically, um, we had asked for a waiver from the town standard requiring the offline catch basin. So, um, and we had received a comment that the EPG recommended that we, um, you know, that their, their view was that it should be an offline configuration. We had a meeting. We submitted a revised plan since the last meeting showing, um, kind of a modified in the middle design where we pulled off, um, the majority of the catch basins in either an off, fully offline configuration or in a condition where instead of, you know, say having four or five catch basins in a row, we would only have two. Um, and that's the plan, that the latest plan that we've submitted. So, um, basically from the applicant's viewpoint, we are, you know, trying to meet in the middle here and still request the waiver from the full offline, um, catch basin configuration. You know, we've shown that we meet all the requirements for recharge, for, um, you know, reducing our stormwater flows, uh, providing the, the water quality, um, requirements for the system. We've addressed, I believe, all EPG's other comments related to the drainage system. Um, and, you know, we really wanted to focus on that we're hitting the performance standards, you know, outlined in the Mass Stormwater Handbooks. And it's really, um, you know, the same result for our system. And in one of, you know, the big measurable that you can kind of point to with numbers related to this is that the, uh, Mass Stormwater Handbook requires you to remove eighty percent of, of TSS. So that's total suspended solids. That's your grit, that's your sand off your parking areas and things like that. So the requirement's eighty percent. Um, we have two different treatment chains on site, um, and we're at ninety percent removal on one and ninety-three percent removal on the other. Um, and we had done a quick calc to show that even if, and that's without claiming that twenty-five percent removal credit. That's a, you know, that is, um, allowed to be taken if you have an offline catch basin configuration. So, and then we had, you know, provided a calculation that showed that even if we had taken that credit, it would only increase our overall efficiency, um, one percent for each of those chains. So it would take it from ninety to ninety-one and, and ninety, uh, three to ninety-four percent, I believe. Um, so, you know, just from the applicant's standpoint, um, we thought that, you know, we, we feel we're meeting the, the design requirement as kind of the engineer before said. You know, we're, we're stamping the plans. It's our design. It's a private development. It'll be a privately maintained development. Um, we're hitting the TSS standard, which is kind of the resultant, um, calculation for, you know, what this kind of goes into. Um, and that's why we were requesting that, that waiver from a fully, um, offline catch basin configuration. So that was the main, um, kind of, I don't want to call it, kind of sticking point, um, left in the review, I believe.
Yeah. So that item, it starts on page three of the most recent review letter, uh, continues onto page four. And, uh, I'll, I'll summarize. I don't want to speak for EP, but since they took the time to write all this down, I might as well. Uh, says they acknowledge the applicant has added to manholes to reduce the number of inline catch basins. Uh, but there are some, uh, inline catch basins, uh, that remain. Uh, in light of the fact that it's our regulations, EP is, continues to disagree with the proposed use of the inline catch basins on the site for reasons that I just stated previously. It's in our, uh, it's in our rules and regulations that govern that. And there is some. And there is some sort of guidance, if you will, in the Stormwater Handbook to that end. And this has been a sticking point. This is something that we've met and talked about a couple of times at a meeting and then tried to clarify positions outside of a meeting to get to this point where we're at. And so I, I guess really what you're looking for at this point in time is the board to basically, whether you want the board to grant the waiver or not. And.
Correct.
Um, right. So, Adam, did I summarize that, that response?
Yes, yeah, you, yes, you did.
Okay, good, good. I, I just wanted to make sure, you know, we always count on EP to, 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 to represent our position and they do it again vigor, very vigorously. So they're just pointing out that it just doesn't meet our regulations. Now, we have the ability to waive regulations as the previous public hearing you heard. And, and so that's what the applicant's asking at this point in time. And I can, I can give my feelings and then I'll ask the, the rest of the board. This is somewhat of an important issue. But I, I agree with the applicant in that this is a private system. This is a private commercial development within a privately owned property. This is not something that's going to be dumping into our town. I say dumping. It's, there's not stormwater that goes into our town. None of that has taken place. And has demonstrated the actual numbers, the, the, the benchmarks, if you will, the milestones, if you will, they were all met and in some cases exceeded. It, what we've come down to is what basically a professional disagreement and a waiver request from our regulation. So I, I particularly don't take exception to it. And that is not to diminish EP's opinion, but again, they're stating fact. It's, it's a requirement, not regulations. And their opinion is that they should meet the regulations. So, um, but I, 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 in my opinion, and I'm only one member, I, I don't, I don't take exception to what they want to do. It is a much better situation that was originally proposed. And through the process, we've got a better situation to, that meets the requirements. So I'll open it up to anybody else on the board if they have any questions or comments on that.
So Bob Joe's planning board here. So just to clarify again, the handbook requires TSSs of 80%. And you're showing from what I'm reading here, 90 and 93% in your latest design. Is that correct, Brandon?
Correct, yep.
And you're the newest design, the hybrid system. You have, it's like two, two catch basins tied together before you hit a, a blind basin?
Yeah, I'm looking now. I think it's two in a row are, is the max that we're seeing.
Okay. And I prefer that, to be honest with you, to have them all tied together, yes, you can do that. But at least this gives some stopgap between, you know, an overrun of one to next, to the next, the next, before you hit the, your retention pond, which again, as the chairman just stated, is all private. It isn't dumping into public wetlands, isn't dumping the wetlands, is a private retention, retention area. This is a private system. You didn't mention any O and M plans. I see you have defenders on here. I'm looking down here. Checkmate Ultra Flex, check valves.
Yeah, we did submit.
Downstream defender units on there also.
Yeah, we have a couple downstream defenders. We, the, the valve, you mentioned the flap valve was something that we, one of the last additions that we worked with EPG on to just make sure that no water was, if the basins reached capacity, the water wasn't backing up through the downstream defenders. You know, any risk of re-suspension was eliminated. And we did submit a full operation and maintenance plan for the stormwater, you know, all the aspects of the stormwater system.
Okay, I just don't see a copy of it, I guess.
Is it not?
So I don't see it specifically. But I, I'm, I'm not opposed to, to this hybrid system myself. As long as there's never intent to try to turn anything over to the town or try to divert any water to, to the town. And it's the town responsibility for removal. If, in the future, if sewage goes by there or, or catch base, or drainage goes by there, this will be wholly on your property and it'll stay on your property and you have no intent to turn it over to the town in any way.
Correct.
That's, that's all I have.
All right. So, um, that being said, does anybody else have any other questions or comments on this? If not, I, I think because this is such an important item, I think at this point in time, it's probably best that we vote on, on the waiver request just to get it out of the way. So it's, it's not how we, the, the, all parties have spent a, a bulk of time on this. So I'd, I'd like to just be able to move on from it. So if it's the board's pleasure and they would like to, I'll, I'll entertain a motion that the, the waiver request be granted for that one specific item.
Yeah, I'll make that motion with the applicant's most recent submittal with the, all the, the, the changes that he made in their last submittal. And I'd also like to see some kind of possibly deed restriction saying that they can never be turned over to the town. The responsibility for the drainage can never be returned over to the town.
Okay, so can I get a second on that motion?
I second.
Thank you, Deb. So discussion on the motion. Before we vote on it, Tom, if you're still there, that's, that's not an issue, right? Putting some sort of deed restriction on there?
No, there's no intention to ask the town to accept it. So we don't have any issues with any kind of restriction on that.
All right. So that being said, then motions remain supported. If there's no further discussion, then I will do a roll call vote. Bob Joe's?
Aye.
Uh, Deb Robbins?
Aye.
Chris Mello?
Aye.
Devin Demaris, aye. Passage unanimous. Okay. Why don't we continue on with any other outstanding item that you're looking for a waiver request from tonight?
Certainly, Mr. Chairman. We, um, back on October 5th, we submitted a detailed list of waivers. There were, there were 10 of them on that list. We did go through them that evening. The first one, I think after some discussion with the board, we realized wasn't a waiver that we need to request. It had to do with the menu boards and the bylaws specific in terms of what those menu boards need to have from a requirement standpoint. And we'll comply with those so that, that's not anything we're looking for from a waiver perspective. And then we, I can run through that, that waiver list again, if that'll please the board.
I was gonna say, did it, did, did we not talk about these? And, and did we give some sort of indication on, I, I can't remember. This has been going on for a while and I apologize, but.
We did. We, we went through and I think we had a conversation, not on all them. It, it seemed that a number of the, number of the waiver requests, I don't want to speak for the board, but it seemed that they were agreeable to them. There was some back and forth on some of them. But I, I don't, I think the only one where there really was an issue or really any lengthy discussion, and it's, I think was the main reason why we continued the hearings the last, last time, was to deal with that catch basin issue that we just voted, that the board just voted on.
Okay. So, Adam, you've, you've taken a look at the waiver request. Excuse me. Everybody, again, this document is available on our website on, uh, as a PDF. So scroll through the list, you'll find it. Are there any outstanding items on the, on that?
Um, it, I'm not sure if it 100% lines up with our review letter, but I, I'm not seeing anything.
I was gonna say, I didn't think so. I, I don't remember anything on there that, that stuck out. The one thing I do remember us talking quite a bit about is the fact about the signs, kind of like we did on the prior public hearing, that if it meets the bylaw, then it's a buy right. And we would only ask that when the building permit is applied for, that the approved plans or whatever plan set is provided, if it's buy right, that we get it. If not, we're gonna get it anyway because you'll have to come back for another special permit. But I would imagine you're gonna meet the requirement as you stated, so.
Well, we did submit, yeah, that was for the menu boards, Mr. Chairman.
Right.
But we did, we did submit for a sign permit for the overall, what I'll call the overall signage for the facility.
Right, that's a separate special permit that you've required. That's another, that's the public hearing that we're running tonight, too.
That's correct, that's correct.
Right, right. I'm trying to get through this and the other things should, should be easier once we, once we get to. So again, the waiver, the waiver request is there. If we didn't take any issue with the first time other than item number one and item number 10, we've already voted on item number 10. That was the catch basin, the catch basin. And we've heard Adam just state that there are no other outstanding items and it's, most of them are fine. So does anybody want to make a motion on the, on the waiver requests? It would be items two through, oh, two through nine.
Two through nine, correct.
All right.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to grant the waivers as requested and the changes made as submitted. Items two through nine on the waiver request letter.
Thank you. Thank you. Motion made supported. There's no further discussion on the motion. We'll do a roll call vote. Bob Joe's?
Aye.
Deb Robbins?
Aye.
Chris Mello?
Aye.
Devin Demaris, aye. Okay. This is hard doing it on, on computer, going back and forth between documents. I'm not gonna lie. So I'm back to the review letter. Is there anything else? It would seem that most of these things, the items have been closed out. Is there any other outstanding item on there that needs to be addressed?
I, I, sorry, go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Grant, sorry. Uh, sorry for interrupting. Yeah, no, I think we had, um, I think a couple of comments on the signs, just noting that they are relatively tall. Like the main sign, it's relatively tall compared to the rest of the site and that the site is at a relatively high elevation. So just making the board aware that the top of those, that sign in particular may be quite visible.
Yeah, we can, um.
So that's like pages seven and eight of the.
Yep. And I looked at that and, and again, that's, but I looked at that as more of that's, that's stuff that we're considering when we do the actual special permit for, just, just for the sign.
Yep.
So this is more, and I, I know, again, they're all kind of congealed together, some of these things because of the site plan review. But I'm, I'm more specific about if there's anything else outstanding on the site plan review. I would just like to, you know, close that public hearing, move on to the next public hearing if we can.
Okay, so yeah, it's just a couple, like, kind of, uh, traffic related ones. One was that, that item with the site triangles. The other was, um, it's close, but there's a, a fire truck turning. They submitted a plan that it showed some overlap with, like hitting a curb, basically, that the fire truck, if it gets around the northern building, would hit a curb. You know, is it possible that they may have been able to tweak it a little bit so that it could avoid hitting the curb? Maybe, but given what we see before us, we had to comment, given the safety implications of it, that it looks like it's hitting curbs. And so they would have to check in with the fire department or provide some sort of plan that definitely confirms that.
And if I can jump, and we did do a, a tweaked analysis and we, you know, I have a plan showing it not hitting the curb that I can provide, Adam.
Okay, and, and again, this is, I don't want to get into a, you know, again, professional disagreements. It's one shows a plan with a stamp on, the other one says they got this. Is there a way that we can just agree to, 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 to split the difference? Is there a way that more of a, like a wider asphalted Cape Cod berm or something can be put there to accommodate? Should a, a fire truck or is it, is it?
Well, I'm saying that I, I think that since, I think, um, I don't think we submitted the latest plan. It might not have made its way.
I apologize.
Yeah, but I think we, I think the current design accommodates the fire truck. And I think our, the latest plan I'm looking at now, Adam would agree with. So I can, whether it be a condition or whatever, I can get him an updated plan, like with the landscaping as well, to show him that. It was just the way the analysis was run, really.
Okay.
Yeah, this is, it's a, it's a straightforward.
Yeah, it was a minor thing. I noticed it af, after we sent it over.
All right, so, so again, if, if it's a, if it's a condition that, that sheet needs to be provided prior to us sending out the, that's fine, right?
This is, yeah, this should be straightforward.
All right, excellent, okay. I'm just, I don't, I don't know that I remember seeing anything else. It was just those couple of items. Everything else seems to be closed out and anything, there is an outstanding item that's got to do with the water and sewer. Through an IMA, I know I said this at last meeting, I'm sure Attorney Kellorn and will confirm this. But the IMA states between the city of Fall River and the town, and Bob Joe's, you remember this well, I'm sure, that Fall River is handling all water and sewer permitting, billing, hookups, the whole nine yards. So any requirement, I, I would say that any requirement that we have for going through our town or providing us with the necessary information is just that if that could be provided, once you get approval through Fall River for the design and the connection, if we could get a copy for the water and sewer department records and one for the planning board records. So then in the future, again, we would have those things more readily available.
That's not an issue.
All right, and Adam, Adam, you don't take umbrage with that, do you? I'm using that word umbrage a lot tonight, but.
Nah, I mean, it's up to you guys, yep.
Yeah, perfect. Does the board have a, a problem with that?
Nope.
No?
No.
Okay, I'm gonna take silent, perfect, I like silence, that's good. Okay, so I'm gonna, I'll have to add that, so water and sewer connection. I think what's gonna end up happening here, because there's so, there's so many of these little things that are gonna need to be written up that we're gonna do like we did on the last one. We'll have, we'll have Chris write up all the conditions and the, the waivers and send them out for confirmation. And then we can confirm them at our, at our next meeting, if that's, if that's fine.
When's the next meeting, Mr. Chairman? Just out of curiosity.
The next meeting, the next meeting is the, is the 14th. I'm sorry, the 15th is, is, is the, the next meeting. And what, um, what I think what we're trying to, to look to do is, is, is close the public hearings. We've, we've, we've done our engineer review. All these things have been closed out. We're just at the point for waiver requests. So I think by consensus, you're hearing that the waiver requests are gonna be granted. But it's, um, I, we just, we, we typically do like to see, other than the ones that you pointed out, two through nine, that we've already granted, there are other some things, you know, the site triangle, the fire truck turning and water sewer, the other things that we would like to probably see in writing, if, if you guys are all right with that. I guess I was talking to, to any, any party in, involved. If everybody's okay with that, then we can proceed that way? We can close the public hearing tonight then on that?
Yeah, I mean, we certainly, obviously we'd like to close the public hearing tonight, Mr. Chairman. I'm just, um, before we, I can give you my, my affirmative in terms of a timing perspective. I just wanted to get some confirmation from Mr. Gia Colby, but, but I'll, I'll send him a message while we're going through this. And if you don't mind, I'll just circle back with you in a few minutes.
That's fine. I, I, listen, this project, like many others, I understand the timeliness issues and trying to best accommodate them. We can, we can vote on these things and, and vote on it just pending final approval, if you will, of the, of the official waiver.
Understood.
You get what I'm saying?
I do.
Yeah.
I do.
Okay, all right. Just, it's always best, and I think you might agree, Counselor, that it's always best to vote on something that might be in writing in front of you before you, you know. So if there are no other outstanding items that I can see on the actual site plan review, and if there's nothing else to add, if there's anybody from the general public that has something specific on the site plan review that we've been talking about. If not, um, planning board members, do you have anything specific on the site plan review to talk about? Any concerns? Again, I, I can't, go ahead. I can't thank the applicant enough and, and our own Adam for work, working on these things. It, it takes a lot to do this, you know? 17, 18 page documents. Seventeen, eighteen page documents, uh, going back and forth, so again, kudos to everybody. Uh, so, uh, then I'll entertain a, a motion to close the public hearing, uh, for the site plan review, uh, for the Innovation Way neon, um, yeah, it's called neon, correct? Yeah. So, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? There is none. Um, I'll, uh, do a roll call vote. Bob Joes?
Aye.
Deb Robbins?
Aye.
Chris Mello?
Aye.
Kevin Damaris, aye. Motion carries, um, to close the public hearing, uh, on that, so, um, I don't know about the rest of the board members, uh, uh. This has been something, quite honestly, this type of project is something that we've been looking for, for a while. We've had a couple of other, uh, bites at the apple, if you will, but, uh, for whatever reason, their interest went elsewhere. We have a, a, I don't wanna call it a problem, but certainly an issue, if you will, with, uh, tractor trailer traffic in our town. It's what happens when, you know, you have a couple million square feet of big box warehouse. Uh, and they're all just looking for a place to, to, to park for a little bit, fuel up, get something to eat. Uh, and this is gonna provide a safe, or at least in my opinion, a safe area of town, not within the, the, the village, not, not even, uh, you know, north of, uh, the exit there in, in, in Asana. So this is gonna be, it's basically in Fall River, if you will, so, um, I'm just glad that we have this project come into town, it, it can hopefully eliminate some of the issues of the, the parking and, and, and some of the other things that go on, uh, with, with the type of warehouses we have. Um, so, that being said, uh, the only thing left on this one would be to, uh, if the board felt comfortable, would be to issue a condition of approval and that one condition would just be, uh, final sign off on the, uh, requested waivers.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second it, Kevin.
Okay, thank you. Motion remains supported and, uh, for, if there's any further discussion on the motion. Again, just to briefly to, that I recollect the conditions that, uh, we're gonna do, uh, finalize. But we've already been given, given a consensus approval is the, the condition for the site triangle, it already appears to be met, but we just need a, uh, the, the plan to show that. Uh, the new plan, uh, for the fire truck, uh, radius turning, uh, appears that that's already been met. And then the caveat information, uh, or, uh, narrative relative to the water and sewer. Uh, that, that information be given to both planning board and water and sewer department. So, um, that being said, we've got the motion, uh, if there's no further conversation to be had, then I'll do a roll call vote. Bob Joes?
Aye.
Bob Joes, aye. Debbie Robbins?
Aye.
Debbie Robbins, aye. Chris Mello?
Aye.
Chris Mello, aye, and Kevin Damaris, aye, uh, passes unanimously. Uh, thank you, gentlemen and, uh, ladies for your work on that. Um, next special permit you have for that is the, uh, is the sign. And so, uh, that was addressed in the EPG peer review. Um, and I'm trying to find the page.
I think it's page seven and eight.
Yeah, yeah. Page seven and eight, uh, so if the board members wanna go to that and, um, yeah, if you wanna share, if anybody wants to share their screen, Chris, just say so and they'll, I'll let, you just, he'll make it happen. So, uh, pages seven and eight, you said, yeah? Alright, so, go ahead and, uh, there it is, make the, uh, make your presentation. Of course, you've already done that to a certain degree, but just politely remind us, if you will, of, of the sign and if you would be so kind to just address the, uh, items that were, uh, pointed out.
Do you want us to bring these signs up on the screen, uh, Mr. Chairman?
If, if you have the ability to do that and.
Brandon, do you, do you have the ability to do that?
Yep, I'm just finding it right now.
Um, so, I, I, I can, I can briefly go, it, this is, this is an internally lit sign, correct?
Internally lit sign, um, so we need the approval for that, uh, as well as the hours that we're looking to have the sign lit between eleven PM and six AM, there's a restriction. Uh, prohibiting that, um, so we wanna be allowed to have the signs lit during those hours. Um, it's anticipated that the facility will be open twenty-four hours a day. Um, obviously, if it's not open, the signs won't be lit, but that's what the anticipation is for the, uh, for the facility.
Alright, and, and, and looking at the comments actually, um, items, there's only four comments, item three has been closed out. Um, and the other two are basically left to, uh, our own devices on it, it's, um, one is that the sign extends twenty feet above the ground, given the elevation of the current site and the surrounding area, that the sign may be widely visible, we defer the board to determine whether to grant a special permit. Um, I think we talked about this briefly, there was a desire, uh, by the applicant, if I'm not mistaken, to, uh, at least have it high enough so it can be seen. I think there was a request or, uh, uh, we asked for consideration to, uh, the houses that are granted the nearest houses across a four lane highway and massive interchange, but I think we wanted some, uh, we wanted to do to shed a little light, if you will, on, on that, so, um.
Alright, can everyone?
What is it? Please?
Can everyone see the, the site plan, the signage plan?
Somebody say yes.
I, yeah, I can hear.
Perfect, alright. Um, so just for reference, you know, you've all seen the site plan, the, the signs located here at the northern entrance where it's labeled one A. Um, these other ones signify the ki- the, the gas canopies that have signage on them, but that, the pylon sign we're discussing is here at the entrance and, and this is what it looks like, it's, um, from ground level to the peak here, it's twenty feet tall. Um, and basically, that's what it would look like, it's, it's got the clear zone under the, underneath, um, to, you know, allow site distance underneath it, um, but I believe in all the, um, it meets the, the requirements of the town, um, it's just, you know, I know EPG picked out, it's pointed out that the height of it, um, with regards to the surroundings, but it's, it's twenty feet tall.
Right, and, um, you know, they also did go out of their way to, to state that the, this site does provide a little bit of, um, it's a setback, you know, relative to noise too, you've got the highway, you've got, so it takes into consideration those things. I don't take issue with a twenty foot sign, you know, a single family home is, it's almost twenty feet. It's not, it's, we're not, it's not a monster of a sign, uh, and given its location, uh, I don't believe it can be seen from the houses on South Main Street, not unless they can see over.
Yeah, if, if, I just threw up the aerial plan, you can see where the site, um, I mean, the, the closest houses are these ones on South Main Street and a lot of them would be blocked by Amazon in the highway ramps themselves and. Um.
I think.
I don't.
The sign itself, it would be on the, on the, what I'll call the front side of the property as well, so I mean, the, the building itself will be in between any of those residences and the sign.
I guess I was trying to get at a greater point, that we already have a hu- huge footprint over there in the Amazon facility, whether it be light, noise, traffic, all those things. This project, while significant to you folks, pales in comparison to size. So as pointed out, I think accurately by EPG in their review letter, that most of the adverse effects, at least what I remember reading, uh, are mitigated simply by its location and its proximity to another rather larger facility that is already emitting light and, and noise. And, and so, that's kinda where I was trying to, to, to get to with that. So does anybody have an issue with a twenty foot sign up there on Innovation Way?
Absolutely not.
Okay.
No, I, we actually approved a lighted sign on the side of Amazon that's higher and.
Right.
I don't know, the lumens of the sign they're produ- they're, they're proposing, but, um.
It's certainly bigger and it certainly can be seen from the highway, so.
Yeah, yeah, so, uh, I think this sign, uh, isn't even close to the, in comparison to the sign that's on the side of Amazon.
So, and the one where it says the hundred fifty foot Lambert, uh, God bless engineers, uh, and that item was closed out, uh, updated item plan has been provided and it meets that requirement, so. Um, quite honestly, and I, I think so, item one was the internally lit, um, twenty feet above the, the ground, we don't take exception to that, uh.
Kevin, can I just, um, add a, a point about this?
Yes.
Yeah, so, just relative elevations here, I believe the site, um, maybe it's like average elevation's about two thirty. Roughly, give or take, so the top of the sign's roughly, I think, two fifty. If you look at the site plan, Amazon, there, it, this is on a hill, so, it, Amazon is downhill with this location.
Yeah.
Um, and then across the way, I think it, you know, South Main Street's at elevation like a hundred or so, so just to, just to be aware that even though there may be a, a sign on the Amazon site, just the site itself is, if you look at the contours, it, it is built up above the Amazon site itself.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good point, Adam, and I wasn't trying to diminish that, so.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure it's just aware, just aware of that.
Yeah, you're being a hundred percent accurate, I think, uh, I, sometimes I spoke, I, I speak more relaxed in that most of us know exactly where this area is and we know exactly where the sign is and what its potential impact, but a lot of times for the benefit of everybody, I just, I ask the question so we can get this, with the, the, that out, so I appreciate you pointing that out, but. Um, so, that I don't think changes anybody's opinion, does it? No, uh, on that.
No, and the sign I was talking about's on the top of Am- Amazon's building, which is the top of their elevation. Um, gotta be, it needs another fifty feet and ta- uh, uh, above this, like, more, probably more than that, above their ground level.
Right, right. Um, so, um, relative to the applicant requesting it be internally lit from eleven PM to six AM, um, you've asked for a special permit on the hours of operation for your business, correct?
Correct.
Right, and so this is just to coincide with the request relative to, you want to operate twenty-four hours, is that correct?
That's correct.
Right, okay, and I think we had talked about that at our pri- uh, 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 prior meetings. Uh, and I don't think the planning board took any exception to that, is that, is that correct, planning board members?
Yeah, the only, the only, um, statement I had was if they do change the hours of operation, that the hours of operation of the sign being lighted also changes, uh, to reflect.
Correct.
We don't have an issue with that.
Alright, and for, so everybody understands what, so everybody understands what Bob means.
Orange, or do you want me to do berries? I want my berries.
Uh, 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 um. What they're saying is if, if, I was gonna say, I'd take the orange, I don't know, whichever.
Alright.
So, no, I guess the point is, um, if in the future they decide, you know what, it, it's not worth it staying past, open past, uh, you know, midnight or two o'clock, we're gonna close two to, to, to five, during those three hours that they shut down, you want the, you want the sign off.
That's correct.
Right, okay, alright, and you take no exception to that, Tom?
We take, we take no exception to that.
I love that, okay. So, um, that being said, I don't think there is any other, uh, we've talked, we, uh, talked about the menu boards and I think we addressed those already, uh, with the site plan review, that those, uh, those need to meet the town bylaws and it just, when you get the, the final wording, whatever it is, that needs to be provided with the, uh, when you.
When, when those menu boards go up, they, they've gotta comply with the specific requirements in the bylaw.
You got it. Perfect. So, uh, if that's the case, uh, then, uh, does anybody else have anything to add on the, uh, sign, uh, special permit for internally lit sign? If not, then I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing for that special permit.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made supported, no further discussion, roll call vote, Bob Joes?
Aye.
Deb Robbins?
Aye.
Chris Mello?
Aye.
Kevin Damaris, aye. Okay, um, so we closed the public hearing, now it's our ti- I, again, I think we've kind of gone over this at this point in time, that, uh, the only requirement on there is that, uh, that the menu boards should, uh, uh, need to meet, uh, the current, um, bylaws, as, as laid out in our protective bylaws. And so, what we're at, what we're approving is a twenty foot high internally lit sign, uh, that meets the, the hundred and fifty Lumen require, or Lambert requirement, uh, to be internally lit, uh, for twenty-four hours a day, uh, until or unless, uh, there is a reduction of the twenty-four hour operation. And then at that time, the light would need to be turned off for that duration. Uh, if I'm missing anything, please, somebody correct me. Alright, then I'll entertain a motion that we issue, uh, that we approve the special permit with the aforementioned conditions and exceptions.
I'll make the motion to, I'll make a motion to approve with the conditions as you noted.
Second.
Motion's remained supported, uh, if there's no further discussion, roll call vote, Bob Joes?
Aye.
Uh, Deb Robbins?
Aye.
Chris Mello?
Aye.
Kevin Damaris, aye. So, your special permit for the internally lit sign is granted. Uh, next on our agenda would be the special permit for the, um, for the twenty-four hour operation.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay, so I've called that hearing to order already and, um, again, uh, Amazon already operates twenty-four hours a day. Um, there are multiple businesses, I believe, that, uh, are already utilizing Innovation Way that are twenty-four hour operations, uh, I think up on, uh, on the backside of the airport, I may be wrong, but I guess my greater point is, uh, there's multiple ships operating all the time up there. And if we're gonna have a twenty-four hour shipping center in town, I think it makes a hell of a lot of sense, uh, to have a twenty-four hour, uh, place where they can pull over, park, get something to eat, get, uh, get a little rest if they need to before they get on their way without having to file into the center of town, so. I take no exception with granting a special permit for the twenty-four hour operations. Anybody else from the planning board have, uh, any comments?
Nope.
Nope, okay. That being said, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made supported, uh, no further discussion, roll call vote, Bob Joes?
Aye.
Deb Robbins?
Aye.
Chris Mello?
Aye.
Kevin Damaris, aye. Public hearing has been closed. Uh, now all I need is a motion to issue the, uh, s- special permit to allow them to op- operate for twenty-four hours a day.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion made seconded, there's no further discussion on the motion, I will take a roll call vote, Bob Joes?
Bob Joes, aye.
Bob Joes, aye. Uh, Deb Robbins?
Aye.
Chris Mello?
Aye.
Kevin Damaris, aye. Passes unanimously, uh, okay, wh- wh- what else do we have here for you? The drive-through.
Uh, actually, it's the, the drive-through's allowed in the science technology overlay district. So it's, it's just the, actually, it's the gas station use, which then kind of goes hand in hand with all your other approvals.
Site plan review and everything else, right?
Right.
So, um, so yes, the, you're right, the, the, the drive-through, uh, the si- yeah. So, um, I apologize, again.
That's okay.
This is, this is a nuanced.
I filed a special permit for that and then we, we pulled it back after, uh, after, I guess, some feedback from Nils, yes.
Yeah, good, excellent, yeah. This is a very nuanced, uh, 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 application to submit it. So, the only thing outstanding is relative to the, uh, the location of, uh, sighting, location of the gas station up there on Innovation Way. Um, it's an allowed use by special permit. Uh, again, makes sense to have diesel pumps up there if we're gonna be having, uh, diesel tractor trailers utilizing that, uh, Innovation Way for Amazon. Um, so, um, again, of my opinion is, I, I think this is a perfect place for this project. Uh, and it's, uh, desperately needed, so, um, I have no issue with the sighting location of Innovation Way for, um, gas station. So, if anybody else has any comments or, on that? Nope, then I'll entertain, no?
No, 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 no comment, I'll make, make a motion to close the public hearing.
Perfect, thank you, uh, I need, check it?
Second.
Perfect, uh, motion made supported, closed public hearing, no further discussion. Uh, Bob Joes?
Aye.
Uh, Deb Robbins?
Aye.
Chris Mello.
Aye.
Kevin Damaris, aye. Um, so, that being said, I'll entertain a motion that we grant the special permit for the sighting of a, uh, gas station to be located at, uh, what address they're giving is zero Innovation Way, I believe, for, uh, the Neon, uh, application.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made, supported. No further discussion? Hearing none, uh, roll call, vote, Bob Joes.
Aye.
Deb Robbins.
Aye.
Chris Mello.
Aye.
Kevin Damaris, aye. Well, counselor, did that just about take care of everything on the menu tonight?
I think that takes care of it, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, uh, very much, and thank you, members of the board. Uh, just one procedural question, just so I understand the next step. So, in between now and your hearing on, I think you said the fourteenth, um...
Fifteenth is the planning board.
Fifteenth, sorry. Um, decision will be written and the board will vote on the final written decision that evening?
You got it.
Got it. Thank you.
I mean, the deci- the decision are what they are, they're in, they're within the motion, but, you know, the actual detailed decision, the findings, you know, the verbiage that needs to be on there, and then more importantly, the official waivers list. We will send it out, uh, as quickly as we can, and, uh, we'd like to send it to applicant and our planning board members, so that if there is an error and or omission on either part, it can be pointed out, uh, before we move forward, so.
Makes sense.
But we're, alright, so where we stand right now, the approvals have been given with the conditions that were, uh, um, um, implied through those approvals, or, or applied to approvals.
Great, thank you all very much.
Yeah, this is, this is Nick G. Kobe. I just wanted to thank everybody for very collaborative and, uh, and a great, great process to get this approved. We're really excited to, uh, to get going over there, and we're really happy to be part of the town, and, uh, looking forward to, to being part of the community over there, so. Thank you very much.
Appreciate work with you guys, thank you very much.
Yeah, you, you as well. Thanks, guys.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Um, so, next on our list, we have a, we have, uh, the public hearing, uh, for the site plan review regu- to, to the rules and regulations for solar. Um, this meeting's been going on for a while now. We do actually have number nine, a discussion with Danica Warrens, uh, regarding our comprehensive bylaw review. Um, I know she had, uh, been discussing this with Mills, and this is something, it's a time-sensitive kind of thing, so we had to put it on for tonight, so. I think with the public hearing relative to the rules and regulations of the planning board on site plan review, uh, we, we may wanna just open and continue that, uh, to, uh, a, a meeting in a, in a couple of weeks or whatever, that's, uh, that we don't have as much on, because this is, it's very taxing, I'm not gonna lie to you, for me to try and keep everything squared when we have so much on the agenda, doing it remotely, um, so.
Mr. Chair, the next meeting seems like it's gonna be another full meeting. Um, we've already, we've, we've already continued, I think, seven things to that meeting. Um, maybe the rules or the plan, the site plan review would be, be better, um, the first one in January, where it's currently a clean slate, and we can start reorganizing then.
Uh, alright, so what I'll do is I'll call this, uh, public hearing back to order, um, and just, is there anybody here tonight that was here for this discussion? From the general public, if anybody? Chris, are there any more people still hanging on with bated breath, other than Danica Warrens?
Uh, there are fourteen participants, so.
There's still fourteen people? Wow. Okay, um...
Hey, Kevin, this is, uh, John from CVE. I just wanted to let you know I'm here, um, just with Ryan Young, uh, listening in for the conversation, but, uh, we'd be happy to continue it for another time.
Okay, alright, yeah, we just, we, we've got an awful lot going on. Uh, it's unfortunate, and it's, this is, this is hard, these Zoom meetings, um, so.
No problem.
I appreciate that. So it looks like we're, um, what, Chris, off the top of your head, or if you wanna quickly look at a, um, calendar, I think I can pull one up. What's the first January, what's the first January, okay? What's the first, um, Monday in January, uh, Tuesday in January, excuse me, let me see.
Uh, the fifth.
The fifth. Uh, everybody available for the fifth?
It's fine for me. It's fine.
That should work.
Perfect. Alright, so I'll call this, uh, public hearing back to order, uh, as aforementioned, or as I just mentioned, that, uh, we've got a lot going on, on the next couple of meetings, and this is something that, that's gonna require some, some thought and, uh, some work, so. Uh, Bob, I agree with you, might as well get through the holidays on this. Um, it's not going anywhere right now. So I'll entertain a motion that we continue the public hearing for the rules and regulations relative, uh, site plan review for large-scale ground mounted solar, uh, installations to, uh, continue it to January fifth. Um, six o'clock again, guys, working for everybody? Yeah, six, alright, six o'clock via Zoom.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made, supported. There's no further discussion. Um, all in favor, uh, roll call, vote, Bob Joes.
Aye.
Um, Deb Robbins.
Aye.
Chris Mello.
Aye.
Kevin Damaris, aye. Uh, so it carries unanimous, uh, we'll be taking that up January fifth. Sorry to make you wait, uh, Danica, uh, but as you can see, we had a busy, uh, night, and we're trying, we're trying to get everybody in, so. Are you with us, Danica?
Hi, yes, I'm here.
Oh, God bless you. Um, so, what I'm gonna do, Danica, is, uh, we, we've, uh, Chris, we have this on our website, right? The PowerPoint that she submitted to us, is that correct? Am I saying that correctly?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so if you go to our website again, it should be, uh, the Free Town Bylaw Presentation, Review Presentation, third one from the bottom, uh, and that's what Danica is going to be talking to us about. Um, I know she said today with Chris that she will try to be as brief as possible, but also be, um, as thorough as possible too, so I appreciate both those things. Um, so that being said, uh, Danica, I'm, I'm gonna turn it over to you, and, and we'll go from there.
Thank you. Um, I can also share the presentation on my screen, is that okay? Would that be easier?
That's, but you, you, go ahead, go ahead and do it. Some of us don't, uh, are not on computers, so, uh, that's why I often tell people that you can get it all so online, but feel free, Chris, whatever you need to do to share the, the screen, that'd be great.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna share my, so you all should see, um, my PowerPoint now. Um, but first off, thank you so much for making time and letting me talk to you all about this today, and yes, I am going to try to be as brief as I can, as the chairman stated. Um, so hi, everyone, my name is Danica Warrens. I work with Mass Audubon, and I'm consulting for the town on this project to do a comprehensive bylaw review. So I just wanna talk to you all a little bit about the process and what I'll be doing, and then to get some feedback on all of you, on what you hope to get out of, um, this process. Um, as I mentioned, I work for Mass Audubon. Mass Audubon is a conservation nonprofit that's working to protect the nature of Massachusetts for both people and wildlife, and we do this through our, um, educational advocacy and conservation programming at our network of sanctuaries across the state. For this project in particular, I am working with the Resilient Taunton Watershed Network, also called R-Town, and we are a group of twenty or so, twenty or so state, local, um, federal agencies, as well as nonprofit and academic partners that are all working to promote ecological, economic, and social resiliency of the Taunton watershed. So, um, for this project, um, in particular, I'm working with, um, the logos you see across the bottom of this slide. Serped, Manomet, the Nature Conservancy, and Mass Audubon are all partners in this, um, Resilient Taunton Watershed Network. And I just wanna note that Bill Napolitano from Serped is on the call with me, um, right now, he's here as well, um, and he's also partner in this work that, um, going to present to all of you. So, um, we have funding to do this work from a Snap Watershed Grant. Snap is the Southeast New England program, and our project is called Catalyzing Transformative Change: Planning Together for Resilient Communities Through Nature-Based Solutions. So there are a few different, um, components to this project. Um, the one that I'm focusing on today, it's a comprehensive bylaw review that we're working on for three towns, Free Town being one of them, and the other two towns we're working with are Dayton and Berkeley. And, um, what we're doing is using a tool that Mass Audubon has, which I'll talk a little bit about in a moment, we're doing a comprehensive bylaw review of all of these communities' regulations to help to encourage more efficient stormwater management and low-impact development, and to, um, improve community resiliency to both the current and future climate change impacts. And then also additionally, any other goals that are identified by the town, by the community, um, which we'll get to in a little bit. I hope to get some feedback from you all on that. So why bylaw review? Uh, the answer is you get what you zone for. Um, the, the local bylaws and regulations in your town are what dictate how development happens and where development happens. Um, and oftentimes, the way that, um, oftentimes, the, a lot of these regulations don't get updated very regularly, and a lot of towns come up against the, the, the fact that if everything were to develop by the regulation, as the regulations allow, that it could change the character of the town. So doing bylaw review is a way to just kind of take stock, take an assessment of what your bylaws allow for, and make sure that it's consistent with, um, your plan and your vision and your goals for the town. And, um, a lot of towns are interested in adopting more sustainable practices and resilience-focused practices, like the ones that our tool is, um, designed to encourage, but, um, they wanna adapt, adopt more of these practices, but they find that the, the outdated regulations and bylaws don't necessarily allow it, or maybe don't encourage it. Um, and some examples of this could be requiring larger light lot sizes and having strict requirements for, um, dimensions that cause, um, larger developments and eat up more natural areas, uh, requiring larger roads that result in unnecessary impervious surfaces that can cause, um, stormwater management issues and other things. Um, and those are just, uh, a few examples. So the, the tool and doing a bylaw review is just a way to kind of like take stock and assess of where you're at, and make sure that what you wanna see happen in the future of the town is enabled and encouraged through your regulations. So, um, low-impact development, which we also sometimes refer to as LID, is a, uh, a type of development, uh, strategy, so to say, um, that encourages more of these sustainable practices, um, to help, uh, limit the impacts of development on, um, natural areas. So it's, it's designed that works with nature to manage stormwater and decrease the impact of development on surface and groundwater quality, but also quantity, so addressing some of those stormwater management issues. And it does that by, um, managing stormwater as close to the source as possible, and to treat water as a resource rather than a waste product, so rather than, um, taking stormwater from a site and run off from a site and just piping it and sending it away somewhere to be treated, um, treating it closer to the source, trying to, um, uh, remove the pollutants and get it back into the ground to avoid some of the, the infrastructure and, um, treatment costs down the line. Um, so things like that, again, just an example. Um, I won't go too much into this topic, 'cause I want to really focus on what the tool is and what we're doing. Um, but I just want, um, to point out that the, the tool is, kinda looks at your regulations through this low-impact development lens to try to see where, um, these more sustainable and lower-impact practices can be adopted locally. Um, so again, why bylaw review? It helps to just kinda make sure that your goals are reflected in your bylaws, and that the type of, um, growth and development you want to see happen is what is actually being encouraged by your bylaws, and if not, how can you amend those bylaws and regulations to fix that? Um, and then how is, uh, what I'm doing right now, I'm reviewing, um, all of the town's bylaws, and then comparing the existing regulations to what the conventional and maybe the best practice, um, best practices would be for those, to compare them, and then I'm gonna draft a summary with, um, the analysis from my review and my recommendations, uh, and share with all of you. And then I can work with you to help identify what some of the easier or more challenging, um, updates might be to adopt, what is a, a simpler administrative update versus what would have to go to a, um, town meeting for a vote, um, and things like that, so we can work with you to figure out how, um, how to go about next steps. So here are the five goals of the tool. Uh, one, to protect natural resources in open space. Two, promote efficient, compact development patterns and infill. Three, smart designs that reduce overall imperviousness. Four, adopt green infrastructure stormwater management provisions or low-impact development. And then five, to encourage efficient parking. And those all are, are different kind of strategies for low-impact development. So here is just a, a snapshot of what the tool looks like. It's an Excel spreadsheet that kind of has the regulations that fall under each of those five goals I just mentioned. Um, so each one of those lines is a different regulation, and then on the left-hand side, we have what the conventional language would be, what a better example would be, and then what the best practice would be. And then on the right-hand side is where, as I'm reviewing all of your bylaws, I would fill in what your local regulation is for each line. And then, um, what I do is I compare yours to what the conventional better and best examples are, and then I can color-code the, the cells. So the end result of this tool, and when I finish doing this, I'll share it with you, so you can see exactly. Um, but pretty much what you get is this color-coded matrix that shows like which bylaws and where in your bylaws are you doing a good job of encouraging these practices, and where can you make improvements. So it can help you to strategize, um, if you see a lot of orange in one column, then maybe that's a, a, that would be a good one to tackle, to do some updates, so, things like that. And it can also help you to see consistency across bylaws. If you're requiring one thing in bylaw, in one bylaw, and then one thing in another, in another one, it can kinda help you, um, identify where those discrepancies are, so you can address that. So, um, these are the documents that I have, um, to review. The general and zoning bylaws, the partial mixed-use development overlay district rules and regulations, the subdivision rules and regulations, site plan review rules and regulations, and, um, wetland protection rules and regulations. So, my first question for all of you is, is there anything missing from this list that you would like me to take a look at? One, and two, um, are there maybe newer versions that I should be considering to, to what is on this list?
I think you've covered them all.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, uh, do you, does Free Town have a...
Oh, I'm so, hello, I'm sorry, hello, Danica?
Yes.
I was muted, so I just having a conversation with myself just then. So, um, one thing I, I think you could add to that list, we are doing a, uh, rules and regulations review for our, uh, solar, uh, bylaw. Um, and I know that, um, that might be something, because we are a little unique in our town. We allow large-scale solar in residential areas. Um, and so we're trying to find a way to better cite them, and I'm just wondering if that's not something you wanna add to this? Is it appropriate to add to this list for at least, uh, consistency across bylaws and special permits? 'Cause you're right, we do have that problem very often, where, uh, one bylaw or something calls out on one hand, uh, but it's, and some of them are just counterintuitive to begin with, so. Um, is that something you think you could, uh, add to that list?
Yes, yeah, I can add that to the list. You said, are, are you working on updating that right now? What's the timeline for that?
Yeah, we just, right, so we just continued the public hearing tonight till January fifth.
It's that one that you just mentioned, okay.
Right, and so, w- w- really, we've had, I will say, much success in town with citing them in our community. I don't know, I think we've got twelve. We could possibly have a few more than that now. Uh, they've been beneficial to the town in that they provided us with tax revenue. Excuse me, um, and they've also allowed these large property owners that, to some degree, were harmed unintentionally, but through, uh, major... But through a major zoning overhaul, a, an additional outlet. Or use for their, for their property, you know, back to your managed growth and, and all, and you know, how do we? So, but I think that, I think there are things within that, that if, if we're going to be looking towards more environmentally friendly. Rules and regulations for other things, well, we should probably consider that, you know, I think of like a pollinator blend grasses. I know that was something that I brought up and, you know, how do we make it more of a viable environment? For some of the other critters that might utilize it, you know, we found birds love the solar arrays. They make and they nest in there and. So I just didn't know if that was something that would be appropriate for at least you to take a look at. And, and see if there's something that you might want to add or think would be important to that conversation.
Yeah, certainly. This is something that is a common topic in a lot of towns right now. That are struggling with, with citing these larger scale developments. And it's something that. Mass Audubon in general is very interested in and has a lot of experience, not me personally, but my team has a lot of experience with these types of developments. So if that's something that you're interested in, then we can certainly take a look at that and make recommendations considering. Like the environmental impacts of citing and, and pollinator and other wildlife habitat, like you mentioned.
Right. I think, and to caveat all this is you, we, not to go back, but again, I've been muted for a bit. When you asked why, you know. If our, our goals reflected in our bylaws, and if, if so, how? And if not, what might barriers there be? And I think we have. We have oftentimes barriers associated with a smaller town, whether it be access, actual infrastructure. Money, the desirability of the actual town and the elected planning boards to, or elected officials within the town. So, you know, those are type, some of our, our barriers are just, you know, who we are and what we are, you know? So. But other than that, yes, that'd be great if you could look at that and I'll let you continue.
Certainly. Thanks so much for that input. In terms of other bylaws, regulations, do, do you have a open space design or conservation subdivision regulation? Anything like that that I should be?
We, we do not. We're struggling just to try and get a, Chris can attest to this, an open space committee, right? There's, there's just not, and, and this is part of the barriers that I talked about. We tried to get an open space committee to get a, Chris, am I saying that right? Am I? It's the open space committee, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so we tried to, and we asked the volunteers and, and it just, nobody wants to do it. They have enough going on. We just have the same cast of characters. So, so those are, so please, if you're, whatever you're doing with Free Town, understand that we're going to have barriers, whether we like them or not. And in, in some cases, we can't do anything about them. So, no, to answer your question, we don't. We have no specific conservation. Most oftentimes, I think some of our rules and regulations, whether it be site plan, special permit, or subdivision control. Does address Wetland Protection Act things, but I, I would like to see even within our own subdivision control. More credit given maybe in some instances to whether, not necessarily be open space, but utilizing more environmentally friendly tactics, if you will. To address stormwater management, you know, more rain gardens, more open swales that, you know, more things that can be. More beneficial. So. I guess we would have some room for improvement in, in those areas, but there's nothing specific to conservation.
Okay. And that's fine. I just really mostly want to make sure I'm not missing anything. So thank you. Okay, so that's it for documents. And then. So next steps quickly for, for this project are I'm going to complete the bylaw review. I'll share my recommendations, as I mentioned, and that the completed tool with the analysis. And then I can work with you all to identify some of the low-hanging fruits and based on like, like planned updates, like the. What you just mentioned, the solar rules and regs. And other types of like administrative changes that you're interested in working with, we can work with you on that. If it comes to more. More labor-intensive issues, like if you wanted to say, for example, adopt a conservation subdivision bylaw. Not saying that that's what, it has to be the next step, but just as an example, then we could kind of help you figure out. How to work with what's important to the community and identifying and prioritizing in that way. And then whatever you decide to do next. I just want you all to keep in mind that as you're considering these updates or maybe adopting a new regulation or bylaw. That you don't have to start from scratch on this. The, the state has a really great online toolkit called the, the Smart Growth and Smart Energy Toolkit. That has guidelines and it has example model bylaws. For, to, to guide you in, in doing this process. And of course, you have support from me and my team as well. So I, I just wanted to note that. And that's it for the project. And then I was hoping to have. A discussion, kind of like just talking about goals and, and what your interests are, as you already mentioned some. To, to kind of help me focus my efforts and my attention as I'm doing the review. So are there any types of? Any other bylaws in particular that you're interested in maybe doing some updates or, or any goals in general that you have? Or that you would like to get out of this process? I'll just open the floor and let anybody weigh in now and, and let me know.
I think the only bylaws we would, we had talked about before, and really nothing pertaining to this about was the density. In certain areas of the town where currently from historically speaking, the densities are higher than other parts of the town. That have came along after subdivision control, like the 72 subdivision control law change and the latest subdivision control law changes. So those would be interesting to see. Any kind of proposals for those areas?
Yeah. And I think specifically what we're talking about is oftentimes, we don't, no. No exceptions are granted and, and it's difficult to do things in those areas where the lot sizes are smaller and, you know. We've talked about making some changes and, and, and Chris can forward those ideas to you that we had on that so that you at least have them. They're very basic, but you know, part of our. One of our barriers is just enforcement. You know, the reality is we're a small town and unfortunately, we have big things going on, but it's tough when. Local officials continue to think small. And, you know, we don't have staffing levels. It's difficult for our zoning enforcement official to actually do the job. So there's a bit of a sentiment within the board and it's been talked about at open meetings that I don't know that we want to create any new bylaws. Just to have them sit on the books and not be able to be enforced. And you know, part of that is our problem too on the planning board, that when we create a bylaw, maybe this is something you could look at too. Right now, specifically with so, with solar is where we're getting a bunch of these issues, but we have them on a couple of residential subdivisions where. During the construction process. You know, we approved the subdivision, here's the approval, here's the conditions. Off it goes, the copy of the approval goes off to the zoning enforcement official, and then the expectation and how it's always been is. The, while there's review for the installation and the engineering of, of some things by the planning board's review engineer. At the end of the day, that's, that's more for our edification and when we go to sign off on the as-builds to making sure the structures actually work. But for any special conditions and all, it's up to the zoning enforcement official to, to enforce those things. But we're getting calls and we're getting hollered at like we need to do something and we try to tell these people it's out of our hands. So maybe it's something that if, if there are useful tools that are already being utilized in other towns or communities or wording that we can add that. You know, maybe we have a bit more authority, but then again, I don't even have a 40-hour-a-week clerk and we're all volunteers. So that's part of our issue with the bylaws is a lot of times, whether it's redundancy or confusion or just, we have so many of them. They're not being enforced and we're almost feeling like we're batting our heads up against the wall. Because we do months of work only to create something, only to have it not getting forced or. You know, so that's, again, back to the barriers, Danica, that's, that's certainly one of them. Then when we start talking about new bylaws and, you know, wholesale changes to low impact development and conservation. They're exciting things in my opinion, but unless we have the infrastructure in place to actually make them effective, I, I don't, I don't want to be doing a bunch of work for naught. So, you know, maybe that's something too to look at while you're just keeping in mind that. What's a tool or what's wording or what's something that we can put in these rules and regulations or bylaws that would give us some relative authority in that? And our responsibility for zoning and for, I, I don't know the right answer. It's being kicked around within our town to increase the zoning enforcement officials duties, if you will, or to get them some help. But I'll, I'll believe that when I see it, but it still leaves us at a very distinct disadvantage to not have enough zoning enforcement help. So again, just a little tidbit about Free Town.
A question I had too, Danica, is where are you coming at this from? Are you coming at this from approaching our bylaws and seeing how you can make them more? Environmentally friendly? Or are you looking at just an overall scope of our bylaws in, in general and seeing where you, you can find conflicts and. Rectify the conflicts where one bylaw may say one thing and a rule and regulation may say something totally opposite. Is this strictly approached from? The Audubon Society to make this, make our town just more environmentally friendly and approach the bylaws that way?
That is our approach, yes. So that, that's the main way I'm looking at it to see where in your existing regulations. Can encourage like more sustainable growth and development patterns. But that's not to say that I can't also look at those other things that you raised. And the, the way it's set up. So I, the way it's set up, it has me, it calls out specific regulations that we look for that are relevant to these types of sustainable development practices. So across those that we are specifically looking at. I could tell you if there's inconsistencies across your laws. But that being said, if it's something that's not on my list that I'm looking, if it's not like in this tool, then I won't necessarily be able to tell you if there are conflicts. So I could share the tool with you and you could see what I'm looking at. And if there are other areas that are not listed here that you, that you're suspicious. Maybe there are conflicts that you want to be resolved. I can consider that in addition to this. But I will say that the, the tool and the lens through which I'm looking at these bylaws are kind of, are really more geared towards the. Growth. Regulations. So I, I'm not necessarily looking at every regulation.
No, and but at the same time, I think admittedly, when you approach things and look at how they can become more environmentally friendly. You end up touching on things that you wouldn't ordinarily think, you know. Rather than widening roads, we can look in some instances in narrowing roads, you know? Quite honestly, I think we oftentimes, we talk about changing and reducing our subdivision control. Stormwater requirements and, and, and all. For the subdivisions of four lots and, or less. And we've often talked about coming up with some sort of standard. Rather than having the applicant come and design something that they might think that we might like, and then asking for all the waivers under the sun. And always pointing out that, you know, the stormwater management doesn't require stormwater. Treatment and all for four lots and less, that, you know, maybe that's something. That you look at four lots and less subdivision rules and regulations to be created as a subset of our existing. And with an eye towards, hey, if you do all these things that are more a little, you know, a little bit more environmentally friendly. Usually what we do is we say, yeah, you don't have to meet it, but we'd like to see drainage swales. We'd like to see some sort of treatment. We'd like to see something. So if we could come up with some sort of standard. That people could meet, and if it ticks some of the boxes that you're talking about, then I, you know, I think that would be, I think that would be huge for us, quite honestly.
I was just getting more towards, sorry, but I was just getting more towards the genesis of what triggered this and where this came from. This is, this is through Serp Ed, Serp, Serp Ed's funding this?
No, this is by, this is through the SNEP grant. This Bill Napolitano from Serp Ed. It's, it's a partnership. We're working, yeah, we're working with Mass Audubon and Manomet and the Nature Conservancy. So there's a bunch of us doing it. And the whole idea is to help towns, like Danica said. Look at things, look at, look at how things can be done more efficiently, maybe a little more consistent with what the state's prescribing as far as the smart growth toolkit goes. And, you know, in the process of doing the audit, Danica can come across things, you know, that would come into conflict to prevent you guys from doing what you really want to do and getting what you really want. To get out of your bylaws. One of the things I do have, and I'd be glad to pass on to Nils, is I have a brand new, still sealed in the package. Smart Growth Toolkit from the state on disc. That way you can get it, you can, you know, keep it, look at things specifically, have discussions, you know, at your leisure. But it'll give you a good idea of what the state has in its menu and what Danica looks at when she's doing a comparative analysis. The other thing is, when you have things like this, the checklist that Danica is going to give you, I think one of the good things. And Bob and Kevin, you both alluded to this. And, and listening to it tonight, actually, it's really good to kind of sit through the whole, you know, public hearing process too. Environmental partners, your consulting engineers, very good. You might be able to go back with them and look at where the most common conflicts arise. As far as what you're looking for, how you have enforcement issues, what people are asking for for special permits and waivers. And then seeing how improved regulations might help you get by some of those hurdles too. So you don't have as many asks, as many special considerations, you know, to go over. Because if it's in the bylaw and it's put there, then it's up to the proponent, the development proponent to adhere to your bylaws. And I think it might help your planner and the board in general. And where you interface, say with Conservation Commission, like you brought that up tonight, Kevin, a couple of times too, where you had. Planning board considerations talked about in Conservation Commission, you were talking about conservation considerations tonight in planning board meeting. And that's good because you should have integrated, kind of integrated bylaws, goals and purposes that aren't at odds. And things that, you know, proponent coming into Free Town can say, this is the way I have to do it when I go to Free Town. And that, you know, there's things, even with the solar, when you're talking about, I thought it was great you mentioned. The, the plantings. I always say, you know, maintain edge habitat, maintain the forest, don't take down trees unnecessarily. Put in things that attract pollinators. And some things are really simple, like pink and white clover, you know, that they'll lock in nitrogen, you know?
Yeah.
The critters love them. So there, this is the kind of thing, you can take stock of the things that Danica is doing and sit back and look and see what you really need. But it might be a great, a great opportunity, like I said, to sit down, you know, with Nils and your consulting engineer and say, where do we run into the most conflicts here?
You know, that's a, that's a very, that's a very good point, you know? Bill, again, you, you, you're very familiar and thanks for being here tonight, Bill. It's been a while since I've, I've seen you.
No, no, I'm here with my partner. This is great. I work with, I love working.
Yeah, I know. It's been, it's been a while since I've seen anybody. But it's, yeah, I, I, I think we can accomplish multiple goals. And I think it'll be important for us to do that, to reach out to environment. It's something that we have been talking about, you know, even some of our regulations. Have requirements relative to actual construction or, or the, the actual companies that you need to use. And they may not even be in existence, or there's a much better product out there. And so, yeah, we, we, we really need a comprehensive. You know, look at that rules and, and that's not what we're expecting you folks to do. But if we get a, you know, if we get that, that tool that you've talked about, that CD there. I'm sure we can set Nils on a course to, to start to find out these things, you know? That, excuse me, is going to be something that's going to cost us a few bucks, you know, if we're going to bring in environmental partners group. So it's probably something that we have to have a budget. Um, so it's probably something that we have to have a budgetary request for. So, you know, um, yeah, all good things and always good information that you guys bring. Um, and if we can, if we can somehow, um, come up with ways that, and, and I think another caveat to this, another consideration is, um, Free Town is relatively business friendly, you know, we hold our ground on certain things and we want certain things. But at the same time, we don't want to look, uh, uh, opportunities, uh, and, and just, you know, uh, escort them out the door. We, we want to take consideration all these things. So, uh, what we don't want to do, or I don't think that what this group will be in favor of is if we start getting into regulations that are, I hate to use the word oppressive, but if, you know, uh, uh, that, that will, uh, that'll be more restrictive to developers when, and it make it easier for them to go, you know what, innovation weighs right down here. I can go quarter mile down the street and I can locate and fall river and I don't need to worry about any of this. And, and so Free Town is unique, Bill, as you know, um, we are mostly, let me do me and I'll let you do you. Um, but at the same time, we recognize that there are needs, uh, for requirements, keeping in mind, we didn't have comprehensive zoning till about twenty years ago, you know? Um, so I've been around prior to zoning and now, and I, I see where it's taken us and I think a lot of us on the board have been around long enough to see where our pitfalls are and, and where we're doing right. So, um, I think this is going to be a good exercise and I think at the end of the day, the results of what you're going to provide us are going to give us some serious things to think about. Um, and some, uh, seriously ammunition to go at our existing bylaws and make those changes. So I do appreciate that.
Yeah, and I just want to note that this isn't about imposing regulations at all. It's about making sure that you're, it's about directing development and, and not saying that things can't happen, but directing developers to how you want things to happen. So, and that gets at the, what Bill was talking about, avoiding all the special permits and the variances, like not development, but just directing the way you want it to happen and making it more straightforward and streamlined for everyone.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that, that's important. I, I, I appreciate that.
Yeah, I think what Danica is going to provide you here is like I said, it's a chance to really kick back and reflect. And I always say, Danica knows, she's heard me say a thousand times, simple truths and profound clues. It's, it's really going to tell you where you can go to, to keep the free town that you want and, and still accommodate the things that you need. So i- i- it's a nice opportunity. It's a nice chance to take a break and look at things and, you know, you do things as you can. But that way you'll at least have, uh, a blueprint that you can refer back to occasionally. You know, look at, look at, uh, what you need and look at it in practical terms. So I, I.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I think, I think what, what I interpret, you are look, going to do a, a, a look at our bylaws and our regulations, the ones that we've pointed out to you. And then you're going to provide us with either suggestions or tools that we can improve them if in fact that is our goal. I, I think we appreciate and understand that nothing that you come out with is going to be mandatory on our part that we have to do. I, I think we all understand that and, and, um, we all can appreciate the fact that, you know, no one gets their feelings hurt if we don't do everything that you, uh, recommended, but I think you also appreciate the fact that we're all elected officials within this community and we have, you know, voters and, and constituents that we need to serve, uh, you know, uh, an additional to what the town's overall goals are. So hey, if we can get better tools so that we can provide a better project and it's better for the environment, which ultimately means it's better for the town, uh, and it's not going to be an, uh, uh, an impediment to development, but just simply, uh, more of a direction for development, then I think we're all going to be, uh, on, on board with that. Um, to a certain degree and, and, you know, we need it desperately. You guys work with a lot of small towns, you know, you know, the drill. It's tough with part-time employees, uh, unpaid part-time officials. Uh, but yet, um, we're expected to act like we have all the resources at our fingertips and, and it's just not reality. So, um, anyway, I don't want to hog up anymore of your presentation time, so.
Yes, thank you for all of that. Um, really, it's, it's super helpful. I do see someone has their hand raised, so I just want to.
Oh, gosh.
There's something that they want to say to, to please say it.
Oh, thank you so much. Yeah, my name's Lisa Lundrigan. I'm very interested in your presentation. I'm just a, I'm a resident of the town. And I'm just wondering if you'll have any input from residents of the town or if you're just looking to work specifically with the planning board.
Well, I think, I, I think the planning board chairman will answer that. Um, this is, uh, a grant that's been granted to the planning board and, and well, to the town, excuse me, but the planning board will utilize this. Once we get the information, we start talking about proposed changes, Lisa. That's the time that we're not going to have any input into what they're doing. They're going to provide us. We're in essence hiring them to do it for us. They're going to be an outside vendor that are providing this service to us. Once we get that finished document from this company, if you will, to oversimplify it, this regional planning agency, Serp Ed, then we will make our, uh, internal decisions. Are these things that we want to move forward with? Do we like that kind of deal? Um, but I would say this, Lisa, not to, not to shut out the general public from, from the conversation. If there are certain things, and again, keeping in the vein of what these folks are going to be doing and what we're going to be doing. If there are certain things that you would like to point out to the planning board and Serp Ed, feel free to contact Chris, email him, uh, and then we can forward that up to them, uh, and so that if it's something that's pertinent to, to what they're doing. Yeah, I have no problem that way, but, uh, there shouldn't be any expectation, quite honestly, that the general public would be involved with this. This is an outside vendor, if you will, a regional planning agency hired through a grant or provided a grant through the Audubon Society to provide services to the town of Free Town. Um, and so the time that the public will get involved is once we get the results of that work and then we start discussing them then.
Yeah, actually, this is, this is, um, Audubon's work and we're, we're just partnering with Audubon. It's part of a bigger group like Danica said. This is, this is really her specialty. We're here to assist her. And I think, um, Lisa, once this is posted, that like Kevin was saying, this is where, you know, citizens' input is really valuable because you're the folks will be helping them make decisions if you have to go to town meeting or you have to go to hearings, things like that. It's a general, it's a general education tool and it's something that Danica and Mass Audubon do really well and they've been doing for a while. So I'll give it back to Danica. This is her, this is her thing.
Thanks.
Thank you both. Um, that's all perfect. Um, so I, if, if anyone else has anything, um, any, any of the other members of the board have anything, um, that they're looking, that they want me to consider, or maybe something that they're looking for guidance or recommendations on, um, let me, let me know now. Or I'm also going to post my, um, my contact information at the end of this, uh, presentation. I just have like a couple more slides on resources and then my contact information. Um, just, and reach out to me whenever. I'm going to be doing the review over this month. The, the grant is wrapping up at the end of December, so you have about a month or so to, to get your requests into me, I would say. Um, but then just because the grant ends, that doesn't mean that the relationship ends. Like, we're still happy to work with you on an ongoing basis on all of this. Um, so I'm going to just show you my resources now and then post my contact information. And then if anybody else has, uh, questions or additional comments, I, I will welcome that. Um, but I just want to note that the, the tool I mentioned and, um, we have a series of fact sheets that are all about low impact development. I didn't really get into it too much in this presentation because I wanted to keep it brief. But if you want to learn more about low impact development techniques, um, we have all of this information on Mass Audubon's website at massaudubon.org/lidcost. And then here are some other, uh, great places you can get additional resources on low impact development. I mentioned that State Smart Growth, Smart Energy Toolkit, they have a ton of information. There's also, um, the American Planning Association Massachusetts chapter has a, um, sustainable neighborhood road design guidebook that has a lot of these practices that are, is a good resource to follow. And then, um, the Metropolitan Area Planning Council has a whole low impact development toolkit with more guidance. The Rhode Island Green Infrastructure Coalition has additional resources, case studies about some of these practices. And, um, the SNAP network has resources on their website as well, and they also offer technical assistance grants to communities. So there's not, um, an opportunity open now, but in the, this coming spring, there will be another opportunity where you can apply for services and funding through the SNAP network to implement some of these practices. Um, and you can find out more about that network on snapnetwork.org. And then here's my contact information on the bottom there, um, dwarns@massaudubon.org. Again, want to thank all my partners that I mentioned in this work. Um, and I will take additional questions, comments now, but everybody, please feel free to reach out to me too with additional information because I know it's been a long day and a long night and everybody's probably looking to get off Zoom, um.
This has been, I will tell you, this has been the longest meeting we've had in a while. I'm not going to lie to you. And that's.
Thank you so much for making time for me. I really do appreciate.
No, no, no. Um, it's, this was, it's, it's very important and it's important too that the, the, the folks that, uh, are still on the Zoom see, this is the type of stuff that we do. Far too often they don't know about it. So this is important that it's out there. I'm going to politely remind everybody and Chris, maybe there's a way that we can make this a more visible presence on our website, but this document is, uh, on the Free Town, uh, website under the Boards and Committees Planning Board, under, um, meeting, uh, materials, uh, for the December first meeting. There's a PDF there. Uh, but I will hope, I will see if Chris can't make it a bigger, uh, presence there. So that if folks want to look at it and see. Um, so I, I'll thank you folks again, your whole team. Uh, it, it's great to hear from you. And, uh, I'm looking forward to seeing some of the results. We understand that there's a timeline, uh, and, um, but we, um, we will do our very best to, um, to move forward on this. So, um, if there's nothing else, uh, from anybody else on the board or the general public, no other questions, I'll, uh, I'll politely thank you and, uh, look forward to, uh, talking with you again and, and let you folks, uh, get out of this Zoom meeting. So if there's nothing else.
Everyone.
Okay.
Thank you very much, folks.
No, thank, thank you guys. Really do appreciate it. Good work. Uh, there's a lot of different agencies involved here and it takes a lot of outreach and cooperation amongst them all. And we don't even see it here. So thanks again for all that you guys have done. Look forward to talking to you again.
Right.
You as well. Take care everyone. Have a nice night.
Yeah, you too now. Bye-bye. Chris, I think that takes care of everything. Uh, yeah. Say yes, say, say yes, Chris, even if it's a lie, Chris, say yes. Remember, I, I saw, I saw, I signed your paycheck. Say yes, Chris. Uh, two and a half hours, guys. I appreciate it. We got through an awful lot tonight. We still have some more work to get through, but, um, uh, it truly is, uh, uh, difficult doing this, but you guys are soldiers. So thank you very much. Um, if there's nothing else, um, do you have a, guys have a copy of the minutes? You should, right? Because Chris sent them out.
I, no, they, I, I didn't get a chance to send them out, uh, yet. So I'll have them already. Yeah, I'll have them all ready for the next meeting.
All right, fine. All right. So, and then if there's nothing else, then at this point in time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Again, roll call vote. So I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
I was going to say, somebody better second.
Oh, I.
All right, roll call, all in favor, Bob Jones.
Aye.
Uh, Deb Robbins.
Aye.
Aye. Chris Mello.
Aye.
All right, Kevin Damaris, aye. Dave, I know you've been here all night and you've been sitting quietly. Thanks for coming, man. I appreciate it. Your time will come. I promise you, my friend. I believe next meeting you are going to be on the spot. So thanks again, everybody. Have a safe week, week. We'll see you soon. Bye now.
Good night.
Good night.